Wednesday. Wednesday, March twentieth, about two o'clock. Uh, let's do a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Hawks.
Here.
Commissioner Stahl. Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Hartwig.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter, currently absent, and Chair Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, uh, first item on the agenda, we have approval of the January seventeen meeting minutes in our packet. Uh, just a refresher on it, we were looking at current Creek Estates three. And looks like deciding not to have a February meeting. So we'll need a motion and a second.
The meeting, we, we're going to have a discussion.
Stay here.
But that, but that went away.
A discussion in February?
That we're going to have some discussion about other things except for business itself.
I think we decided against that, uh.
I realized, I realized that when I got the message saying we canceled. Um, but my question hasn't been answered, so I guess what I'm gonna have to do is go to the staff and bug their time.
Move to approve.
So we have a motion?
Was that a motion, Richard? Move to approve. We're still on the same question.
Okay, I'll second it. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Is it, you want to discuss your question, or do you want to just do that afterwards?
I didn't do it on my own.
Okay, we'll do that. Uh, any other questions on the meeting minutes? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Or say aye if you're online, Tara.
Hi.
Perfect. Uh, minutes approved. Uh, next up, we have public hearing, or no, we don't, we have, uh, Commission Business. Do we have any Commission Business we need to talk about? Taylor, Alan? I don't know.
Oh, your microphone's really low. Um, if there's nothing listed under there, then no, I don't know why.
It's a new one.
We did the agenda that way. Sorry.
Trying to throw us curveballs right out of the gate, okay. Um, I don't have anything to bring up, and if anybody else has anything, we could probably add it during discussion at the end. Uh, or Commission comments, so, um, let's just move on to public hearings. Uh, first one is subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero five dash S, the Killin Donk Anchors. And, uh, on the latest updated agenda that has continued to April seventeenth, is there any reason, or do we, should we know why, or?
Um, the applicant team just requested to continue. I think there's still a lot of questions around conditions that are required at the county level, so.
Okay.
Just gonna hold off till.
Is there any timelines or anything that we need to be concerned with to, to make ourselves available to meet? Like applicable periods of? Not pushing it out too far?
I think it just, yeah, just a meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Next month, yeah.
Yeah, if, it would be helpful for us to know as soon as possible if you are not able to attend that meeting because, um, the applicants did agree to extend the normal hundred twenty day deadline for land use applications by forty-five days. So there's a limited extension of our timeline, um, but it does have to go first to planning commission and then to council, so if we know that April seventeenth is not gonna have a quorum for whatever reason, um, we'll want to, you know, work on figuring out whether we can still make that new, you know, additional forty-five day timeline, or if we need to do some more.
Let's just do that now, if that's all right, is it?
Sure.
Sure.
The seventeenth, April seventeenth, at two o'clock, work for everybody except for Richard Hartwig, who's gonna be clam digging?
Yes.
So we got one?
I'm good. It's a possibility I'll be down there.
We'll, we'll give you a pass, it's a good reason.
Close the darn thing, you know.
Uh, Rick?
I'll be.
And I will be here. So we have enough to be a quorum, Tom?
Sure, I'm trying to find my.
All right.
I will not be here.
So, so we'll have a minimal quorum at, at the very least.
Okay.
I will not be here. That's the day that we host that national conference where people come to Estacada to visit our schools and classrooms.
Am I busy that day?
You are busy that morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's, let's just stick to the seventeenth, and, uh, Tom can figure out his timeframe, and then we'll go from there. Um, all right, so let's move along to subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash S, Northbrook Modification. Uh, this is a subdivision we are familiar with. Probably some of us, uh, on the north end of town, Deuce Road and Eagle Creek Road, so if we want to do the staff report, at the end of this, we'll have three options to approve, approve with conditions and deny, I suppose, right?
That's right.
So.
And yes, the State Council, so it would be a recommendation to approve, approve with conditions or deny.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to hear the report, uh, for twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash S, it's the Northbrook Subdivision Modification. So this is a modification for an, uh, already approved subdivision. Okay, the applicant is Scott Clayton at that address, and the consultant team is all county. Um, I think they're called all county surveyors, or is it just all counties? Okay, okay, all right, all right. All right, so in a nutshell, um, this is kind of the, oh wait, no, let me give you the background first, so the Northbrook subdivision was approved in December twenty twenty-one. Um, since that time, an environmental study was conducted, and one wetland area was identified, just over two acres, um, kind of on the eastern, eastern side of the, of the site property, and that wetlands' location and size required major subdivision redesign. So that's what we're here today about. And so their proposal in a nutshell is that the lots will be decreased by twenty-six from one hundred and eighteen to ninety-two. Um, instead of being developed in one phase, it, um, proposals to develop in three phases now. Um, there's an increased number of tracts from four to six, and that includes, uh, an additional stormwater tract and resource protection tract. Um, there are just decreased number of internal streets and, um, two fewer connections with Deuce Road, and the addition of two flag lots, and I will go into more detail about all those shortly. So here's the subject site, um. You can see it's just southeast of the intersection with southeast Eagle Creek and, and Deuce Road there, um, and that it's largely undeveloped. And looking at our coplan map, you can see it's right at the northern edge of our urban growth boundary, and it's not far from the highway and several other subdivision approvals that have happened in the last several years. Um, and zooming in, you can see that the subject site is composed of two lots, there's that little line down the center, and they're both zoned North City Residential. Right, and here is the revised preliminary plan, and as I mentioned, you can, there's the phasing now, so there's the, the red lines and the red writing that shows where the different phases are proposed. Um, and then the newly identified wetlands are in green, right there on the, kind of the center right. Okay, yeah, I just want to go, wait. Is there some reason I have this here? Yeah, okay, so we can see that the biggest changes occur in the wetlands areas. Um, several lots from the original approved plan in blue have been removed, um, two connections to Deuce have been removed. Um, and then there's several sections, yeah, you can see, several sections of roadway are no longer included. Yeah, I can see a little bit better here, too. Okay. And now, looking at the tracts, there's a future development tract, it's similar to the one that was approved in the original um, subdivision approval, it's just slightly smaller. Um, it's reserved for future multifamily development, um, which is allowed within two hundred feet of Eagle Creek Road in the, um, North City Residential Zone. And here are the three stormwater tracks, where there were only two before. And then these two resource protection acts are tracts, um, there was only one before, um. Yeah, let's see. And here are the flag lots, those are highlighted in yellow. Um, and they each share a driveway with a parcel to the west, and, um, both of those flag lots meet city requirements for minimum frontage on northeast Shasta Road. So this is pretty straightforward, um. Yeah, our, our recommendation is to, uh, for planning commission to recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions listed. Um, also, all the original conditions, or all the applicable original conditions from the, um, the twenty twenty-one decision have been carried over into this, um, staff report and are mixed in with the new conditions. And so, just a kind of quick recap of the old conditions, public improvements are still provided, water and utilities will still be provided, streets and sidewalks still be built to city standards, order county standards on Deuce Road. Um, storm and wastewater will be managed, construction impacts mitigated, so requiring erosion control plan, for example. And the fire code will still be met. And a few of the new conditions include, um, so southeast Eagle Creek Road was, uh, taken over by the city last year, and so the standards have been changed to require that those improvements be built to city standards. Um, the stormwater tracks are to be dedicated to the city, and the two resource protection tracks, so that's the big wetlands tract, and the smaller skinny track off to the, off to the east, they will be owned and managed by the, the homeowners association and not by the city. Um, there were few updates and corrections to the report that was posted on the city website, um. The, uh, applicant team sent us an, a memo, um, that outlined a few corrections that needed to be made, and some recommendations for updated conditions. Um, there were erroneously some transit stop conditions, those were removed, and then there were some formatting errors and typos that we corrected as well, and that, that memo is an exhibit, and you can look over that if, if you'd like. All right, that's all I have, so, well, that's all I have for this one, uh, so, next steps are public comment. Um, commission will have a chance to uh, ask questions and discuss, and then we'll have a motion to recommend approval, approval of changes or denial of findings.
Are there any questions for staff at this point in time?
Alan, go ahead. No. Uh, in going through the paperwork, and I might have been remiss on the prior approval of Northbrook, is that most of the transits, in fact, I, I think almost all of the transit studies that Mr. Mobley did were all from twenty nineteen, that's five years ago.
I think it was twenty twenty-one, I believe.
Really?
I'm almost positive.
The dates on the, on the information is twenty nineteen.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, and I went through quite a few of them, and I was kind of surprised because a lot of them seemed very low, like the intersection of River Mill and Highway two twenty-four, and I thought, you know, in five years, that's increased quite a bit.
Hmm.
So, I wish we had a little more, you know, closer timeframe.
Okay, yeah, I can, it's hard for me to search when I'm sharing a screen, I do believe that the the, um, TIS is from twenty twenty-one, is that right? Okay, okay. Um, I will also say that the number of lots has decreased substantially from one eighteen to ninety-two, which would kind of um, I think any impacts that are identified from the TIS from twenty twenty-one would be even less at this point, given that the decrease in the number of lots that they're expecting. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
I, I get it. I, I just worry about the fact that maybe the information is a little updated.
I see, yeah.
You know.
Okay. Specifically about River Mill and the highway?
Yeah, cause that's, that has really increased in traffic a lot.
That, go ahead.
I'm looking at this, and if this is the, the, where the creek runs through from Bill Highlands Cleardown to, uh, Deuce Road, is this the old Lloyd E. Walt property? He was there for a hundred years. Or is that farther to the, cause I, I would swear that that, that creek there, we used to chase ducks.
It could be the same creek.
Yeah.
Um, I imagine it probably is.
Yeah, well, it was just a, uh, wetland, and will always be a wetland, and so I can understand why, uh, this has been remodified just a little bit, because when that creek gets angry, it's gonna get real angry.
And I imagine that's probably what some of these changes are for, and we can ask the applicant.
It'd be, it, you know, makes more sense that this is high watermark.
I have a question, uh, specifically on track E and, uh, C.
D and C?
Yeah, and I'm sure you, you breezed over it or already talked about it. Those aren't shown with any lots on it, but they're not shown necessarily in that wetland, or listed on that last slide you had, I was just wondering, are they just tracks that are gonna be common space?
Um, track D, and are you talking about track D and F, the two resource protection tracks?
Nope, C and C. C and E, the ones that are up against Deuce Road.
Oh, C and E, okay, sorry.
On the east or west side of the north part of that new.
I mean, my understanding of those are stormwater collection tracks, but maybe that, yeah, I can, can speak more to that.
I haven't found it in here, but I'm sure it's in here somewhere, so, if there's any other questions at this point for staff? We can ask those, or we can have the applicant come up, and then we can ask more questions. Let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Um, do we have the statement about evidence?
I printed it out, and then I left it on the printer, so I can pull it up and, and read it from the laptop if you want.
That sounds good.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and just close down the, uh, planning commission meeting, we'll open the public hearing on this, uh, subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash S, if the applicant and/or his, uh, engineering survey team would like to come up, they're more than welcome, come introduce yourself, and then, uh, maybe, uh, answer a couple of questions we already have, and just give us a ten thousand foot overview if you could. Uh, doesn't sound like it's hot.
Good afternoon, I'm Tracy Brown, uh, land use planning consultant, and this is Ray Moore with All County Planners and Surveyors, surveyors and planners, and we have, uh, Scott Clayton, who's the developer. Yeah, just to answer, I guess, a couple of the questions, you know, because of the identification of the wetland, the site is now kind of bisected with that, and so previously, we just had one stormwater pond, and now because of that, we have two, one on each side of the creek, so the, the tract C serves the western part of the property, and tract, um, what is it, E serves the eastern part of the property.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this is, I guess, um, we felt pretty straightforward based on the prior approval and the reduction of lots. Um, track A, the future development site is essentially the same. Um, you know, there are some, uh, blocks that are longer than the standard, be, but that's due to the constraints of the site with the wetland and the, uh, creek on the other side of that street, Shasta Street or Shasta Road. Um, yeah, that, that's pretty much it, I think, I don't know, uh, maybe Ray has some other words, talking about the, you know, the engineering of the site, but that's from a planning perspective, um, I think it was, uh, pretty straightforward, and we, you know, entertained questions, and I, we think it meets the standards of the code.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, Ray Moore, All County Surveyors and Planners, P O Box nine five five, Sandy, Oregon. Um, yeah, like Tracy said, we, we just kind of came back in after we, we delineated the wetlands, modified the site plan, reduced the number of lots, reduced the number of street intersection points out to Deuce Road, and I know that was an issue, I think, with the city council, maybe a little bit with the planning commission, too, back with the original approval, so this kind of alleviates that and reduces that impact. Um, yeah, with that said, I mean, it's fairly straightforward, we're working with the city, uh, the city has the pump station under design, I think probably getting ready to go out to bid, and that's located kind of at the southwest corner there. And so the sewer basically drains into that pump station, and, um, pumps south back up to the gravity sewer line. And in reality, it sounds like there's other developments that are gonna actually happen before this development that will build the sanitary sewer truck main along the south side of the site and the pump station, so all of that will be in by the time Northbrook actually goes under construction, probably in a couple of years, so. Yeah, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commission, any questions? Paul?
I, I'm just curious, the multifamily portion not reflected on here, um, that's still part of the process, and, and what phase would you expect that to happen?
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna really depend on, on our client, Cedar Ridge Homes, when they're gonna wanna pull the trigger and, and do that. Um, so I don't really have a, a timeframe when that would happen.
Still part of the process.
Yeah, it's still, it's gonna be plotted, those lots will be plotted with this project, so they'll be set up and ready in the future, whenever they decide to do some, you know, construction there.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we, we would have to come back through a design review for that structure on that particular lot at the, in the future.
Okay.
So this is just setting up the lot, but the development of that particular lot, we need to come back through with the city's review.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, gentlemen. Since we got the cart a little bit before the horse, I'm gonna read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. Uh, any issue which may be the, may be the basis for appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific applications. Uh, such issues shall be ra, shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the city council and all parties adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing by a letter or in person, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the city council and the party's adequate opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to the city council. So, with that being said, is there anybody else that wants to speak, uh, on behalf of the application? Is there anybody that wants to speak generally or against the application? And do we have it open online, too, that if people wanted to comment? It doesn't appear that anything's lighting up, so let's go ahead and, uh, jump back into the, uh, planning commission meeting, we'll close the public hearing on this one, and we have a slide up there, Alan, you wanna bring up the yes. options to approve? There we go, so, really need a motion, and then we can second and discuss.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve with conditions as presented by staff.
I second that.
So we got that motion, we got a second, uh, any further discussion needed? All right, uh, Tara, I just want to check with you, make sure you don't have any questions, comments.
I'm good.
Okay, perfect. Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, vote then, all in favor, please raise your right hand, or Tara, say aye.
Ayes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so this goes to city council, uh, do we have a date for that meeting?
Uh, yes, April eighth.
Sorry, Tara, or Taylor, I keep looking at you, I forget, Alan's sitting over here.
It's all right.
April eighth, perfect. So you guys will probably get notice of that, too. Thanks for coming. Okay. Moving on to the next one, we have, uh, land partition variance twenty twenty-four dash zero one dash L P. Uh, Vista Noel is an old-ish name that we haven't talked about in a while, but here it comes again. Um, let's go ahead and have the staff report on this one.
All right, let me call it up.
Oh, it doesn't?
Nope.
Yeah, it must be ten years.
We just got the letter about three, four weeks ago, then we, we ended it.
Interesting.
And then the H O A. The H O A, yeah, yeah. The H O A no longer exists. Oh, yeah, I know.
All right. A win for the people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, I live in the snow also.
All right, I will now present our staff report for twenty twenty-four dash zero one dash L P, which we're calling the Vista Noel Partition and Variance Application. Okay, the applicant is Corey Tipton, who I believe is in the audience. All right, look, Corey, um, so the property is at three two eight six two southeast Copeland, as previously, it was recently unaddressed, we just assigned that address, um, and the proposals for a two-lot partition of a six-point-two-two acre property, um, and also a variance from a requirement to connect to city sewer. All right, here's an aerial shot of that property. Um, you see, it's north of Oakview Lane, or sorry, Oakview Drive, uh, south of Copeland Road. Uh, the lot was originally plotted as an open space, non-developable tract in the Vista Noel subdivision in two thousand and five. Um, much of the site is very hilly, and it's not really suitable for development. Um, yeah, looking at this, the coplan map, uh, it's an R one. It's directly adjacent to a part of town that's zoned R two for medium density residential development. Um, it's down the road from the high school and the middle school, um, and it's not far from downtown. I'm just zooming in a little bit further. So those gray dashes are city limits, and, uh, the north property border fronts southeast Copeland, as we saw, but that's, that's a county road, and that's important for later, we'll talk about that. So first, we'll talk about the partition proposal, um, first, um, so back to the aerial shot, um. Yeah, the proposed partition split is in red, roughly spits, would split the property half and half. Um, so it's, it would be about three acres per new lot, which, which would more than satisfy the minimum lot size in R one zone. Um, the applicant is seeking to build or place a home on the northern lot, which contains area of level ground that are, that are suitable for development, and the southern lot would remain designated as open space. So per EMC sixteen seventy-four, and that's our code section, chapter that's called concurrency, um, that code section exists to ensure that transportation facilities are provided concurrent with new development. Um, and partitions within city limits are generally required to improve the road frontage to current standards, regardless of who has jurisdiction over the road. Um, in this case, as I said, Copeland's under county jurisdiction, and per those standards, the minimum improvements along that street frontage would include a twenty-foot wide half, half-street pavement, um, five-foot wide landscape strip with trees, and five-foot wide sidewalks, and that would be along the entire frontage, which is around a thousand feet. However, planning staff has met with city, the city engineer and city manager, and we all agree that because the subject site is located on a currently unimproved stretch of road, under the jurisdiction of the county, requiring the applicant to install street frontage improvements would impose an undue and unnecessary hardship on him, as these improvements would not benefit the city at this time. And so, um, instead, we are recommending that approval of the application be conditioned upon the signing of a delayed site improvement agreement, which would require that frontage improvements along that newly created northern lot be completed, at which time improvements are made to the street frontage of either side, or, yeah, of either of the adjacent lots, and that's, that's a lot, so let me, let me explain a little bit better. So those are the two, the circle lots, those are the two adjacent lots, so, at which point, either of those lots, street funders improvements go in there, that would trigger an improvement along Copeland Road for the, for the subject site, for this application. Um, and conditions of approval are recommended, um, that require the signing of this delayed site improvement agreement, as I described. Okay, now on to the variance request. This is kind of long, so, so bear with me, there's a lot, it's a lot to go through here. Um, okay, so the applicant is proposing to build a home, as I said, on the northern lot created by the partition. Uh, city code requires that newly partitioned lots connect to the sewer system. Uh, city code requires that newly partitioned lots connect to the sewer system. So this graphic illustrates the approximate path and length. Of a hypothetical sewer line between the proposed development site and the nearest sewer line connection on northeast Oakview Drive. Um, so there'll be about four hundred feet. And we go, have to go under Wade Creek and up the hill to north or to Oakview Drive. Um, the sewage would also require some number of lift stations to make it up the hill. Okay, so to. To uh. Consider this variance request, the city has a code section specifically for variance requests. Um, this first section here outlines when variances cannot happen. And so no variance shall be granted under the following conditions. So we'll deal with A first, to allow the use of property for a purpose not authorized within the zone in which the proposed use would be located. Um, so the applicant intends to place a house on the site, which is of course allowed in the R one zone, so section A doesn't apply. And section B. To increase building height by more than ten percent higher than is otherwise permitted in this title. The applicant is not proposing to build this house more than ten percent higher than permitted or. Asking for any variance related to the height limitation. So. Section B does not apply. And because neither of these sections apply. The criteria for this main section is met and we can move on to the next section. Okay, this next section is a little trickier. So a variance may be granted only in the event. That either subsection A or B of this section applies and subsection C and D of this section must be satisfied. Okay, so what is that saying is that? Either A or B. Must apply and C and D must apply. So we'll go through this one by one and. Try to make sense of that. Okay. So section A, we'll start with sections A and B. Okay. So if either of these subsections apply, then we can move forward. So section A says exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property, which do not apply generally. To other properties in the same zone or vicinity and result from lot size or shape, topography or other circumstances. Over which the owners of property since enactment of the ordinance have had no control. So as shown on the map, the level building, buildable area in the northern lot is too far from the public sewer system to feasibly make a sewer connection. The city hasn't installed sewer lines in or near Southeast Copeland yet. So no current acceptable way to provide gravity fed sewer service to this parcel exists and staff therefore finds. That the circumstances are exceptional and result from circumstances over which the owner of this property has no control. Okay, so we find that that does apply. So subsection B reads, the variance is necessary so that the applicant can enjoy a property right. The nature of which owners of other property in the same zone or vicinity possess. So the homes on the properties to the west and east of the site are served by private septic systems. And without a hygienic means of disposing of sewage, the applicant will not. Be able to situate a home on his property, which is zone R one and specifically designated for residential uses. So therefore staff finds that this variance is necessary to allow the applicant to enjoy a property right, which owners of other properties. In the same vicinity possess. Okay, so subsection B also applies, only one of these had to apply in order to move on, but they both do, so we can move on to C and D. Okay, so these next two sections both need to apply in order for the variance request to be valid. So we'll start with C. Okay, section C reads, the variance would not be materially detrimental to the purpose of this title. Or to property in the zone or vicinity in which the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. So the city engineer and public works director both find that installing a septic system would have a less detrimental effect on the property. And neighboring properties than connecting to the public sewer. And in fact, they, they mentioned that installing a sewer pipe across Wade Creek. To connect to the city system poses public health and environmental risks. And staff agrees and finds that this variance would not be materially materially detrimental to the purpose of this title. Or to property in the zone or vicinity in which the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. So subsection C does apply. Okay, on to D, which also must apply. This reads, the hardship is not self-imposed and the variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate the hardship. The city engineer and public works director find that a private se- private septic system is the only reasonable option on this parcel. As it would be safer and more feasible than installing piping across Wade Creek to connect to the public sewer system. So staff finds that the variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate hardship. And so subsection D applies, and since all four of these subsections apply to this request, the criteria for the main subset. My main sec- section is met. Okay. So finally, on to the staff recommendation. So given that this application meets the standards for partitions and variances, staff recommends approval of the application. With the conditions included in the staff report. And there are only eleven of those, so I'm going to go over those really quick. Um, so both lots must be greater equal to seventy five hundred square feet. Which is the minimum lot size in the R one zone shouldn't be a problem, given the size of the lot. Uh, the southern lot will be uh platted as open space. Uh, number three, there's a five foot right of way dedication along Southeast Copeland Road. That's a county condition. Um, also a ten foot public utilities easement will be provided. Uh, cross access easement for sure, the shared driveway will be provided, that's a city condition. Um, number six relates to plating and legal description details and states that no building permits uh will be allowed to be uh. Uh, applied for until final plat approval. Number seven pertains to the delayed site improvement agreement. Just basically outlines that that needs to be signed. Um, number eight, utilities are to be provided and installed underground. Um, septic system will be allowed with the caveat that um. That the parcel must connect to sewer when the line is within with uh within one hundred feet of the northern lot. Number ten, the approval would be valid valid for two years. And number eleven, any future street improvements must meet county standards. That's what I have, that's what I have. Uh, next steps are public comment. Commission questions and discussions for staff in the applicant. And then motion to approve, approve with changes or deny with findings. And I will just remind planning commission, the decision. Is final today, like you would grant final, final decision. This does not go to council.
Okay. Uh, commission, do we have any questions or does anybody need to uh stay in or declare ex parte contact? Richard?
Yes, I do. I happen to know the, the McPhersons very well. Some of the rest of you do too. I was with Brad Day when he bought that property. And there is a bunch of yellow orange flagging running right down the driveway that were never there from the original survey. From the gentleman that had it surveyed that sold it to Brad. Brad and I tore down the old buildings, remodeled the house. And I don't know how many of his relatives have lived there, but one of them bought it. Uh, I talked with them. Within ten minutes of reading this report, and I said, where did that property line come in at? At no time was there any flagging down that road off of Copeland. And so there, by their very sight picture from the overhead, if you pull it up. There's a pole barn right through the middle of that. Newly surveyed. And I can't, I can't come off across with one valid reason that that's not bringing it around ninety degrees. To Copeland Road because Brad and I, we didn't clean any property that wasn't ours or his. So I don't know where he came up with that. And I'm really suspicious. Um. At no time was there three lots to that thing. Now, now we've got right dang near to the middle of the driveway at the top to Copeland Road. For the access which would cut it off for the McPherson's general house right there. Brad would never have bought that with that going on.
Those are really good questions. We also were very confused why the property line is going right through that structure. Um, Clackamas County is the jurisdiction that records any. New lot lines, whether it's in, within city jurisdiction or not. So we just issue the approvals and then they record it. Um, so the county would be the one to have record of whenever that property line was. Um, approved and recorded, or if it was approved and then wrongly record, you know, whatever, but the county would have that. And the city um would, wouldn't really be able to do anything about that. So.
Being personally involved with that, I, I took, I said. I'm going to go see him ten minutes from right now. And I said, this was a very, very good situation that, you know. How do you eliminate that particular? Because Brad could never have gotten. Any of that through the way that it sits right now. You know? What's that?
A title company would not approve it.
Exactly.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't issue titles.
I mean, there is so many, there is so many things wrong with it that I can't believe we're here today twenty years later. Still dealing with it. Because it was never in any. Well, I'm not going to say, because personally Sharon Day has all the documents of when they bought it.
So question on this. Going back to the Vista Noel track being unb- buildable and um. Green space, is that what it's titled?
Open space.
Open space.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
So if the original intent was to keep it open space, how, how does this? Not. How does this align with that original intent? And and what legal? Bounds are we, are we guided by? I didn't phrase that very well, but i- if if it was originally intended to be open space because of this Noel, either including it as. Open space because it was unbuiltable or park-like or whatever. And now we're going back and making buildable. How, how does that affect us as a city and as a planning commission?
That's a good question. Um, so basically the partition line separates it into what is a very hilly section. And wooded section only, and then a section, the northern lot, which has. Level area width, that's, you know, there's, there is a structure already located on that, on that um lot. Um. Ostensibly, the northern lot is buildable. Um, public works and city engineer expressed no concern with with building on that lot. As far as the plating and designating them. Open space or buildable, not buildable at the county or plating level. I'm not really sure about.
So you can imagine when the subdivision came in, um, you know, the whole subdivision would have been. One big lot or one big site and they've got their, um, you know, street circulation, their street layout. And then they've got that section that runs right along that ridge and it's, you know, goes down very steeply to the. Creek and then on the other side of the creek, you do have that smaller. Relative to the whole subdivision side, smaller flat area that bumps up to Copeland. Or flat enough to build on. Um, and so I imagine, I haven't gone back and read the subdivision report, but I think this came up. A, a year or two ago, oh, this came up because the HOA was trying to sell that property. That's why it came up recently. Um, so that property, I think they, the developer probably just didn't. It didn't make sense to try to connect the rest of the subdivision across the creek to that. Smaller developable area that um this applicant would like to turn into one lot. Just because, you know, how would you, how would you get one of the subdivision streets across the creek without? It just probably wasn't, you know, financially smart to do. Um, so they just. I imagine that's the reason they turned this whole uh tract into. An open space tract rather than only having the steep hillside and the creek. Um, contained in the tract and then trying to develop that other flatter side. We could go back and double check the um decision or the minutes to confirm that, but. That's what I'm assuming is the case. And then, yeah, as Alan said, you know, we. Did some digging and coordinating and didn't find any reason not to allow development on that. Flatter portion of the property that fronts Copeland. Um, I feel like I had another thing to say, but that might have been, that might have been it.
Right, since the one portion at the top is, is deemed unbuiltable. Which city of Portland, they West Hills, they build on steep lots all the time. So eventually it could come to a time when it's buildable. Um, so I don't, I don't know. Uh, who maintains ownership of that during the period from now until when it would be built on?
Well, the applicant owns the entire property now. And it used to be that the HOA of that subdivision owned that property and then um the residents wanted to dissolve the HOA, so they. Needed to um sell the parcels, you know, the couple of tracts that they had. Um, and so that's how it came into this person's ownership. Um, so yeah, it's all under his ownership at the time and then um. In the future, he still could, or you know, a future owner could still come back in and ask the city to. Um, allow development on that other parcel and the city could choose to allow development. Um, they would have to conduct a geotechnical analysis because the slope of the site. Triggers that, I think if it's above.
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent slope. Um, then you got to do some extra engineering, but yeah, you can.
But it is possible.
Theoretically build on all kinds of land.
The builder, there's a builder, if you look on the left there, on View Drive, where you see that kind of dirt area. The builder there said that whole area is within the technology to be built on.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's within that, if somebody wanted to do that.
I think the previous, this is my, my recollection. Being on the council and the planning commission for almost thirty years. But that hillside, which already gave way and blew out a settling bond right onto the McPhersons once already.
Oh, did it?
And uh, yeah, all of McPherson's fencing ended up in my front yard. Okay, that hillside is unstable and it slips. You can watch all the trees growing up in a big bend.
Sure.
As, as the, the hillside. We, we've had a lot of that uh engineering that, that, yes, yes, and that's why none of those steep hillside lots. Got built back then. They said, okay, we'll just make a HOA and make that uh.
Sure.
Uh, a trail area for walking through and it was too steep. Nobody wanted to build a trail through it.
Well, my, my information is pretty much what Taylor just told you, you know, because I live in that development, so. And it was part of the uh.
If it was buildable, they would have built.
Well, she was right because, you know, there's no way to connect that to this development though. There's no way to do that.
Right.
And that's, it became economically impossible for them to do anything with it, so they just made it a track and. You know, that's it.
Yeah.
So. This Copeland Road portion came up in the TSP. Uh, there was a section that we revised. Is there a chance we could bring that up?
The Copeland?
Road. Because the, the shop that this blue line is going through is the whole reason why I brought it up. Uh, at the time, the city wanted them to do, the McPhersons wanted to do half-street improvements, sidewalks. Move the guardrail out and all that stuff. And at that point in time, it was the same decision that. It's economically not possible to spend two hundred thousand dollars on improvements to put in a twenty thousand dollar pole barn. That now appears to be on the property line, so um. I think, I think we changed those TSP sections to reflect that none of this would take place. On Copeland Road.
I can't remember.
Huh?
I can't remember. It would be a. Um, yeah, so we would want to check, did we change the classification? I can't remember, first of all, if it was one of the streets that we changed the classification of it and then. On top of checking what its classification is, does it have a special cross section that applies in that specific location? I don't know off the top of my head.
And then while we're looking at that, since the city investigated doesn't have a septic department. Is this all going to be facilitated through Clackamas County and is that, is a septic? System even going to be approved that close to the creek?
It would have to go through. Um.
With DQ?
Well, I guess it would, it would, the, that's a great question. I think it would. Probably have to go through Clackamas County, um, because our public works. Probably have to go through Clackamas County, um, cause our public works. Would Don review that or would he send it to the county?
He would, but the applicant is an installer of septic systems, is that right?
Right.
Maybe he can answer that better, yeah.
And then the last thing is, is can we unannex a piece of property?
I'll check that.
Actually, I believe we can.
Cause i- i- if it's not gonna be served by city sewer, we're not requiring any road improvements. Uh, other than then paying taxes to us, would it be better just to say Clackamas County, this is your baby? I know it wouldn't be better for the applicant, cause we're much better to deal with.
I would, um. That sounds like just being the person who are one of the people who goes through the process of getting the. Taxing district boundary changes administered. I would love to not on it, unannex property just for it to eventually be annexed again someday down the road, but. Um, that's an interesting question. I'm sure it's somehow possible. But I'm not sure if the city has an adopted process for it, but I'm sure the state has a process for it.
Yeah, I don't imagine we do.
And then water service, is it gonna be provided by us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions now that I've kinda thrown four curveballs out there? Go.
Is there no other access point to that property rather than going where it is?
There's no existing, as far as I know, there's no existing other existing access point, is that right? Yeah, that's the only, that driveway is the only one.
Okay.
I have just one quick one on septic also, just cause I I like our our policies grounded to. What was the deciding factor of a hundred feet? Did we, is there a, is there a standard for that or was it just convenient or?
It's a standard that I've heard a few times since I've worked here and um maybe.
It's in the code.
It is in the code, that's right, yes, it is. That's right.
Okay. Are we good to have the applicant come up with our questions right now? Let's go ahead and do that. Let's go ahead and invite the applicant up uh to speak on this application. If you could introduce yourself, uh. Taylor's gonna bring a mic to you and uh kinda give us a rundown on what your thoughts are on all this.
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, I'm gonna try to address all the questions. I know there was a lot of them. It's already been a long day for all of us, I'm sure. Um, to kind of work backwards, uh, annexing. I'm not opposed to. Um, I know that might serve. Uh, your guys' needs and my needs as well. I'm not. Unused to annexing properties. I've annexed properties in Carver for clients before into Clackamas and. And other areas to be able to allow them to use Clackamas County services like water and sewer and things. Um, in regards to uh, would a septic system be allowed that close to Wade Creek? It would be allowed per state and county regulations. I didn't see anything from Estacada directly in your guys' city code that would prohibit that. Um, state and county codes require that a primary drain field be fifty feet from the creek. Per tested and then they might actual, depending on who we do the permitting through Estacada or you guys. Uh, they might also fire a die test as well, just to verify the perk test. Um, but it is, it is, there's plenty of room out there for it. Um. There's room for a secondary and a tertiary field for longevity in case the city doesn't decide to move forward with public sanitary sewer. On Copeland. Um. So I think that addresses that. Uh, doing a lift station up to Oki Drive would be. Uh, pretty complicated. I know the city engineer had come back from Estacada and and said, hey, you know, we do make these lift systems that. You know, companies do make these lift systems that go up this high. Problem with that is they they tend to blow out, they break and then you get. Environmental hazards, um, you know, suge into Wade Creek, nobody wants that, right? Um. As far as the property line goes, uh, that was one of my first questions as well when we were looking at this property. Uh, I pulled all the county records as well as anything the city had. Um, I had A K S come out and uh. Re redo the property lines to the recorded, the latest recorded plot, which was from twenty thirteen, I believe. When Vista Noel was all getting built and taken off. That was the recorded line back then. Um, the northwestern most point of the property, which is above the McPhersons driveway and shop. The original marker is still there, um, next to the power pole. Uh, you can see the new marker and the old marker is still current, so it was surveyed in twenty thirteen with those markers. Um, accepted and approved by the county. Uh, I have been in contact with Kerm. I actually spent a good couple hours with him. He's the owner. Uh, we're getting along just well. Um, we talked about a a shared driveway and easement. He's. As far as I know, he's okay with it. Um, everything seems to just kinda be moving forward. His shop is indeed on that property. Fully, not even the line that uh we are looking at there in the map. Uh, is not quite accurate. You'd push it out about another ten feet to the west. Um, those markers are also still in the ground. Kerm has been nice enough not to remove them. That way, in case any city official, any planning individual, any one of my builders need to go look at it, they have an accurate representation of where it is. Uh, I've already talked to Kerm as well about redrawing the property lines for that parcel. Uh, and giving him about a tenth of an acre to include his shop and a little bit of land to the left and to the right to accommodate for some things that. He would like to keep his. Um, I'm not here to to keep all the property and not let anybody. Like, I'm I'm a good neighbor. I want, I want everyone to get along. I just want my little slice in the in the woods to to live. Um. What were the other questions we had?
I don't think they were directed necessarily applicant more of right away and the sidewalks. And uh, the the T S B specifically.
The T S P. Uh, I just, I found that Southeast Copeland is a major collector. And I don't think that that changed from two thousand seven.
What's that right away with?
The right away with now? Um, I have to look over to. The existing or the standard?
The the new standard.
The new standard, okay, for the county, for the county or for us?
No, for us and the T S B. We we had a meeting and I specifically brought it up.
Okay.
Isn't it twelve foot for each household? Egress, ingress?
No, no, I'm just talking about.
Taylor, was it a special street cross-section or was it a standard?
I think sixty feet.
Okay, I'm looking through all this cross-sections now. Yeah, sixty to eighty, I think.
Um, well, at this point, do we have any other questions for the applicant? As the partition is recorded, are you gonna try to remedy everything with the neighbors at that point in time? If if we choose to approve, is that the plan?
Yeah, correct. As soon as uh, as soon as this is approved or annexed or wherever, it's gotta go to. To continue this process, me and Kerm, the neighbor will begin the legal process of switching over a chunk of that parcel. As well as uh, in placing uh, maintenance schedule, not with Kerm, but just in general for the the northern parcel as well. Cause that's that's part of this, right, is that this wooded area has not been maintained. But nothing's been maintained there by the HOA other than maybe some trimming, so. Uh, me as a environmental scientist, the energyologist, uh. Something that I'm gonna do just for the general neighborhood of Vista Noel to make sure that they still have access to walk their dogs on the right of way and and do that.
And then as far as uh, actual egress to and uh, to your property. Is that gonna go with the McPhersons driveway?
Yes.
And so is the city gonna enforce improvements on there or is it a adequate as is?
Which part?
Uh.
The driveway?
The new driveway to this northern parcel.
Um, we have no conditions related to the driveway.
Okay.
If I may, me and Kerm have already talked about driveway improvements as well. Um, to meet the standard, because the standards that need to be met are also the same width and height variable that have to be made. To get a manufactured home onto the property. So I will be covering all of that.
Gotcha. Okay, uh, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the answers to the questions. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf or against this application? Tara, do you got any questions? You're being awful quiet on the. Zoom.
Nope, I'm I'm here just listening. Yeah.
Okay.
It seems fine to me. I'm like, I, yeah, I don't know why we would not do this, but I'm all, some of the history of it is. Unfamiliar to me, so I'm just listening.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure we were uh, making sure you were in the loop. Um, all right, if there's no further questions, let's go ahead and exit the. Uh, public hearing, uh, back into the planning commission meeting and. We have a decision to make. This is our decision. It doesn't go to city council.
That's right.
And uh, we'll need a motion. Uh, Alan, would you mind bringing up the options again?
Yeah, I mean.
And then if we have any conditions or any additional things we need to add to it, and we need to make sure we. Include those. Okay, sorry. Show screens. All right, there you go. So there's our options, planning commission?
Do we need to discuss conditions first or?
Well.
The motion first, then go into discussion.
Make make the motion if you have any specific uh, additional conditions, we'll include them and then we'll get a second and then we can discuss.
Okay.
I move to approve with conditions.
Your second.
We got a motion and we got a second with conditions. Uh, do we need to discuss any further? All right.
This is opening up a can of fish and worms and a whole bunch of other stuff. Because, you know, I understand he is, he knows what to do for putting septic systems, uh. I suspect uh, oh, the above-ground sand filters and stuff like that. But I am not happy about what I'm seeing on this map. And I'm thinking some previous uh. I'm not gonna blame anybody that's a surveyor, but I've seen surveyors make mistakes lots of times. Including on my properties.
Until I saw paperwork, I can't, I can't approve this one without seeing all the information I could get from from Clackamas County and from uh. Uh, from Sharon.
So are you talking about specific surveys?
Yes, I am.
So I can, we can pull them up, um.
Well, obviously something isn't quite right with Clackamas County of where these property lanes are.
Well, so I'm looking, you can look on C map and you can dig into the documents end of it and it shows. Everything jives between. What C map has and what we're being presented here.
Well, what I'm saying is title insurance would never have approved that kind of a property. With that kind of a driveway. You've got a driveway on a different piece of property now to even access.
Richard, you know these people?
Yes.
And they have title insurance on their land?
I have, I have a clue that Brad would have title insurance on that. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If Sharon's got all the paperwork and she's very organized.
Yeah.
Till I saw what hers would say, cause we would never worked on across the property line on anything.
Right. But that's a, that's not an issue that we're.
That's not an issue that we're in currently.
Yeah, sure.
We're here to represent Estacada.
Yeah, and what what happens with with any land division is the applicant will take the local approval. So the applicant gets the city's approval and then they have their surveyor draw up. An actual survey that they submit to the county. Um, to record the new lot line. And so at that time, the county is gonna double check. All of the records that they have related to the property compared with the rec, the new, um. It's not really a survey, it's called, it'll be called a plat, um, but essentially a survey that the applicant brings into them to request. That they record that new lot line and they double, triple check that it all checks out. So. I don't know, that's about as, that's about as um, certain as we can get about those lot lines. Now, if there, if there were an issue with the proposed lot line, that that's also something we would. Definitely wanna hear about in this meeting, cause that is something that the city has the power to. You know, impose some conditions around or ask them to change it.
I don't wanna ask the applicant to uh, you know. Give property a way that I felt should be with that property to start with. And so. Um, I wouldn't feel right about that either. I mean, he can do whatever he wants to, but um. My, for instance, is in fourteen hundred feet of a section of land I have. A surveyor from Idaho came in, I won't mention his name, and the first time he surveyed. Fence line was sixteen feet off. The second time he did it, it was fifty-seven feet off. And then the third time he did it was ninety-seven feet off. And I asked the guy, I said, you know, you survey this couple more times, you'll be in a full ninety degree taking my old property. But that was under the Bonneville Power Administration's uh, power lines. And I think they might have had something to do with all the. Magnetic fields and stuff. The county moved their brass hub that had been there for a hundred and fifty years. Over ninety-seven feet. Fifteen years later, which was about five years ago, they put it back where it was, but I still lost that ninety-seven feet.
Well.
Okay, so you see, you can see, our county is right on top of things.
Well. I I don't know, I I appreciate the backstory, Richard, and I I I I know these people as well and I. I just hopefully trust that uh, they can come to an agreement. Uh, they both have things that the other one wants. Um, in terms of access and buildings.
Okay, on this thing, I've been sitting here listening. And Richard is correct, we did sit in on the council at that point. But the whole point is. Are we gonna hold the city back or not? That's the question. I've been sitting here all day. I'm just saying, saying, yes, let's hold it back. I think, uh, I don't get any response on this, but my thing is. Richard's concerns should be. In, uh, anything that's being filed. I I can include my name because I remember, but I don't wanna see the city of Estacada being held back.
I don't see the city of Estacada held liable.
Well, that too.
That's a private matter.
So, I guess the question is. You, if you wanna be truthful for me. I guess I'm gonna have to come in and uh, sit down and talk. But by that point, it'll be too late, so.
So you're worried, I wanna understand, you're worried that the city will be held liable in this decision. For the existing property line that's cutting through that existing building. And I can confirm the city would not, cause that is an existing problem that the city has nothing to do with. What's that?
That public meeting now.
Which one?
That one. See, this is back to, I'm sorry, back to the airport thing. The, we passed it. The way that people wanted it and there was changed. There were changes, we realized we didn't like it, so we changed it, but the people didn't find out. So. I just don't want.
I, I. I, I see where you're coming from, Tom, but I, I don't, I think this is two kind of separate. Very, very different.
I don't because. I asked for one thing last week. I got nothing. I knew I wasn't in that meeting. So I asked for one thing. And I got nothing.
Okay.
And so we. I don't know.
Hey, can I? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you, are you done, Tom?
Go ahead.
I, I guess I'm, I'm confused about what the concern here is. There, I, I don't see any way that we would be liable. For trying to second guess property lines that were recorded by the county and that we have.
Yeah.
The only reason that we have to think it's not. May not be accurate is, is. Somebody, the, the guests of, you know, or the memory of somebody who knows the property owner, which is not. Really the way that we should be conducting business. Wouldn't we have to conduct business based on? What is recorded? And I, I guess. If there's some reason that we're going to hold this up as a group, which right now I don't know what the vote on it would be, but we. We would need to be very specific about. What is being asked, what we think we don't know, and how whatever it is that we don't know actually pertains to this decision that's being made now.
I like what she said, but I, I, I've boiled this down. A property line agreement should be, uh. Taken care of, settled on paper before I could approve this motion before us right now.
But, but it is settled on paper is, is the point. It, it.
I mean, between the two applicants.
Is it, is it not settled? Do the applicants feel unsettled about the property line?
Well, I, I think that's part of the process. Richard is that this hat, we have to give this approval for them to move forward with an official survey. And at that point, then the county surveyor is the bearer of. Yes or no? And at that point, there's, that's the legal aspect of it. Is that correct?
Yes.
They're, they're following our recommendation. And conditions. And, and history with the previous surveys and property lines.
Yes. And at that point in time, if. The owner of this property we're talking about today and the neighbor. Uh, property, if they want to adjust the property line, they can apply for a property line adjustment. It's much cheaper. It doesn't involve any public hearing. It's just the staff.
A lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment, yep. Um, and then, but that's still, the city approves it and then that still goes to the county and they still have to go through the process of. Um, you know, confirming the applicant's survey of that lot line adjustment. So that's how they would go about moving that lot line. And if they don't want to move the lot line that the county shows in their records now, then they're just gonna plat this partition. Um, as it is with the existing boundary lines and then the new dividing property line.
Until that was done, I couldn't vote favorably on this, this. Unfortunately, we've got to do one before the other. We're, we're the lead. We're not, we're not.
Let's vote.
You can feel that way and I, I respect your, your ideas. So is there any other discussion that we need? Or should we take a vote?
Let's vote.
And just to remember, or just a reminder, we're approving with conditions as. Staff or as presented by staff.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Got five and oppose? Five, two.
Okay.
And so then this, as far as the process goes, since this is our vote. Everything else will be dealt with through the staff, uh, planning.
Yep, so we will render the decision. There's a fifteen day appeal period. After that, the decision's final. The applicant can, um, go ahead and take their. Um, survey to the county and get the new lot line platted.
And, and they have two years to do all of that.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And then after that, after two years, they would have to come back and. Reapply or ask an extension.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You get a one year extension.
One, one thing we kind of skipped over is just the septic aspect of it. Uh, and farming that out to Clackamas County. And putting a. Period on that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll make sure. So I'm. I think that's Don's wheelhouse because usually all of the utility permitting goes through Don.
Okay.
And so, um, Don would coordinate with Clackamas County, find out if there's like a special permitting process that they have for. Um, systems that are in a different jurisdiction, but still within the county.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not certain, but someone will be reviewing that.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Moving on. Oh, we still got one more.
We have one more very short.
Uh, ginseng drive ordinance.
Yep.
Clarifying some spelling. And, uh, go ahead, Alan, if you want to take this one away.
Alright. Let me share. Make sure this is up. Okay.
And just as a little refresher. Some of us talk, we're talking about this beforehand. We had one of these similar with beach straight across the way.
That's right.
Not that long ago.
Yep.
Just clarifying spelling, so. Go ahead.
Yep, yep. Okay. So this is a proposed ordinance, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero one. Uh, the ginseng drive, street name recognition ordinance. So the applicant would be the city of Estacada. And the proposal is simply to officially recognize the currently accepted spelling of ginseng drive. Okay, so just a little background. Um, last May, uh, the county surveyor's office wrote city staff to bring attention, attention to some discrepancies. In the spelling of ginseng drive on several county plats. Um. They gave us some examples. There are plats from the sixties and seventies that showed ginseng drive as, as shown up there. The first one is a platform nineteen sixty six that showed ginseng road. And then others from nineteen seventy seven on that showed ginseng drive as it's currently spelled. So the county is basically just requesting that we clarify the correct name and spelling. And given that ginseng drive. Has spelled at the, as it is in the bottom, has been the commonly accepted spelling for several decades and as shown on the street signage and. U S post office street addresses. Staff recommends that the city recognize and designate ginseng drive as highlighted there as the proper name and spelling of the street. And this is just basically a little. Background on the process. So per that, um, Oregon revised statute. Uh, planning commission must forward a recommendation to this. Uh, city council to officially designate the name and spelling of a street. Council then designates the street name by ordinance in accordance with planning commission's recommendation or rejects it by resolution. Um, if adopted, the ordinance would allow the county to legally correct the conflicting street names on the plats that I just talked about and any other similar plats. Um, and if planning commission decides to forward this recommendation to council, staff will present a draft ordinance. Twenty twenty four zero zero one to council on April eighth. And so our recommendation is the planning commission forward a recommendation to city council to adopt an ordinance recognizing currently accepted spelling of ginseng drive. And that's, that's it. So we're back to public comment. You can ask questions, discuss, and then. Uh, make a motion.
Okay, any questions? Any discussion?
Let me just talk about this one.
We talked about beach.
It was up on the chancing. Don, are we talking at dawn? Dawn my pals? Or not?
No, I, I don't, I don't recollect it. Maybe you were thinking about this well in advance.
Probably was. I'm just, love this.
Okay. Uh, so we don't have anybody to public comment. Do we have anybody online that would want, want to open this public hearing to? Somebody that's passionate about ginseng? No, nobody's passionate. Okay.
I do have one little question.
Yes.
So this has been changed if I read this document, what, three times now? It's gone from one name to another name to another name. And it's now known as ginseng drive, right?
Yep.
We're not correcting the spelling or anything. We're just adopting that it's going to be this. And it won't come back to us in another five or fifteen years.
Correct.
Alright.
I want to tell you that I, I did a little research on this because I thought, well, what if ginseng was a family name? It's not, and I did a search on that because I had nothing better to do. And I did to find anybody with that name in the area or anywhere in Oregon, by the way, so. I thought, eh, okay.
I'll tell you how you got it. That whole hillside. Clear up and down that hillside was nothing but ginseng grown back in the nineteen hundreds early.
Oh.
And eighteen fifties. The whole place was covered in. Ginseng. And that's where that was derived from.
They were spelling it wrong back then.
They have historic, well, when we had a museum, we had historical pictures that showed all the rows of ginseng growing.
Kind of like cool. Uh, that would have been cool, see, well.
Okay.
Mr. Motion.
Any questions?
Chair, I make a motion to approve, uh, this.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Right hand, Tom. Motion.
I would not.
Passes unanimously. Do we have any other public comment? Commissioner comments? Uh, before we adjourn, yes.
Uh. A while back ago, we had talked about, uh, changing some code and working with the city council on their, um. Special mission and vision for the future, uh, and, and talking about park space and incorporating park space into that. And if, I believe that it got, uh, either punted or, or postponed for. Various reasons, and I'd just like to have the opportunity to revisit that at some point to see when we can get the ball back in the air.
Yes. Great timing.
Thank you.
Um, because I have a note here to let you all know that we have gotten a joint workshop scheduled with the city council. At one of their recent meetings, I forget which one, we, um, oh, it was January twenty second, I think. Or maybe it got moved from that day.
It did. It was originally there and it got moved to.
And it got moved to February. It keeps getting punched back.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. But yeah, we checked in with the council because you, you all have had a couple of conversations now amongst yourself and with the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, about, you know, what to do. What can we update or? Change to, um, ensure that park and recreation space is sufficiently provided as the city continues growing, basically. And, um. I think we talked about how we wanted to make sure that the council was on board with getting this project going and. Uh, we also wanted to find out how involved the council wanted to be and if they had any specific. Desires or priorities for how that project ends up getting done. Um, and. As you all know, that's important because they're the ones who are going to eventually adopt whatever changes happen. So. Um, want to make sure that they're on board with everything from the start. So we, um, did indeed kind of get the go ahead from them. Got some confirmation on how involved they want to be. Um, so it sounds like. Probably a series of, I'm just going to guess, this might change, but maybe four joint workshops across the next year-ish. Um, that could. Be shorter or longer, depending on what issues come up and how much agreement there is among the boards. Um, but this first workshop is scheduled for April first. It's a Monday. Um. I think it's scheduled.
You're fooling us, right?
For six thirty P M.
Six thirty.
Um. With the city council, the planning commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So it's going to be packed house if everyone can attend. Um, you'll get this information in an email as well.
I feel like we must have already announced this. It's really, that's not.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
No.
What was the date again?
April first, Monday, April first. Yeah. Um, and so that workshop will be pri, the primary objective of that workshop is to. I guess there will, there are a few primary objectives, but to identify. Um, and understand the main guiding kind of goals and priorities that the city has among its council and these, the two boards. That will be there too, um, that are going to guide where this project goes. Um, we will also, I mean, another important sort of. Objective of that is just so that all of you can really understand what each other's concerns are. We have. Um, unfortunately, fewer opportunities for the council to meet in joint workshops with all of the boards, you know? It's just. No one has that much time. And so, um, that's. A great benefit of having these joint workshops is that everyone kind of gets. A more, a better feel for what. All of the board members' priorities and concerns are. Um, rather than staff trying to relay them between everyone.
So, so looking at the city calendar, there's two meetings posted downtown Estacada Commission meeting and then. Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. That's not it, is it?
Nope. So I guess there will be three meetings on that day because the D E C meetings in the morning. D E I C is at five.
Five to six.
And then six thirty that day will be this joint workshop. So if that's not posted there, we'll make sure that it gets posted there.
I'm unavailable that day. I. I don't know who else is available from this. But, um. Any forewarning? Further out would be good for my counter.
I will try to prioritize it because it's a big one to me and I'd love if, if the city or somebody could lobby the council maybe where I could just give a short. Spiel, maybe I'm, if it's okay with you all on behalf of the planning commission, just about our prioritization for. Park space inside these new subdivisions that we're approving.
Yeah, definitely. And, um. I'd also say if any of you can't. End up making it on that day and time or at any of the other future joint workshops that will get scheduled. Um, you're always welcome to, you know, submit written comments to us and we can make sure that it gets, you know, provided, printed out or just read aloud. Just to make sure that everyone's participating as much as they can or want to.
I was rather surprised when I saw, picked up the Kellendoc stuff, that the verbiage was still the same as it's. You're not required, but.
Right.
Encourage you.
Yep, it's, that verbiage is gonna.
Progressed.
That verbiage is going to be in there until we.
Yeah.
That needs to be a priority.
I agree. And, and I'm also, this, our, our, our vision is also swimming upstream a little bit because I know. I know there are some council members that have visions for some new property that's been purchased by various people and they have grandiose visions of how to support. Park space differently as well. And, and I'm, I'm in support of that vision also. I just think we need both. Uh, and so it's a conversation that needs to happen, but there's several conflicts. Uh, inside our ability to push this forward and I'm ready to fight every single one of them. Uh, and so I just need the forums to have that battle.
Yeah. Well, the one question I got, how many, how many acres of park space do we currently have?
I don't, I don't, I don't, yeah, don't have that on.
Three, I don't know.
Three.
Two, two, two hundred.
What I read is that sixty was what we need to have.
Yeah.
Or that, that was the conclusion.
Yeah.
Of some of the reading I've done on this and I'm going.
Yeah, the.
I don't think we're anywhere close to sixty.
The parks master plan like has all those stats in it.
Yeah, I think that's probably where I pulled it from.
Okay.
And, and I don't have any fault or blame or, or anything of the way things are. I just, um, as we become a. As we merge into a new category of a thriving community, I think, I think we need to be proactive as to this space. Um, and so I, I have no problem with what's happened historically. It's just time now to take a different leadership role. And what happens now. And there are some conflicts of interest that, that navigate its way through there, so.
I always thought something interesting I'd heard from our, our, uh, council. Said we could look for park space outside the city limits because it was simply cheaper to buy.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, we have a lot of that. We may have some availability there to do something interesting, you know?
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of people who are competing right now to privately create this space in an effort to, um, support the demand. I understand that.
That's a load though.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody have a pocket full of money. Well, it's, it's always the way.
We should just to.
Full of money for all the developments going on that they're paying the difference.
So we have the meeting on April first.
Yep.
Do we have a April seventeenth meeting too?
Yes, so April fir, Monday, April first at six thirty P M is the joint workshop. Regarding parks and. Sorry.
Is that a Monday?
Yes, it is.
Monday, yep. And then Wednesday, April seventeenth at two P M. We really need a quorum because we have multiple land use applications on that meeting. So, um. Please let us know. You'll get emails from us. Just please do confirm one way or the other, whether you'll be there.
So a couple other housekeeping things. Uh, I know that everybody gets busy with their lives and different things come up along the way. So. I think all of us are good as far as our. Term limits go. Uh, sometime soon we have elections for chair and vice. Uh, sometime soon we have elections for chair and vice chair. Um, my only ask as a chairman is that if you're, if you need time off or, or want to ride off into the sunset, we're okay, but we just need some fair warning, maybe so we can plan for uh, getting the right people on here. So.
The next, yeah, the next meeting is when we're scheduled, I think, to elect chair and vice chair.
Okay.
This, on the seventeenth.
I was just looking at the, I think, I think we're on odd years for our term limits, so everybody should be fine. What's that?
We didn't end it here.
Uh.
I just looked that up.
Oh, okay. So anyway, just.
Who is not going to be here on the seventeenth other than myself? Is everyone else going to be here?
I'll be a bit of my good try.
Tara, are you going to be here on the seventeenth?
I think she said yes.
I'm fine with that.
Sorry, it always takes a second to unmute. Yes, I, I should be there on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Good. I just want to make sure there's good people to be here to, I just, if there were three or four people, it's no sense in doing the chair and board.
Oh, right.
If you're all going to be here, then I feel great.
Good vote, right?
And don't elect anyone who's not here.
Oh, that's good.
I won't be here.
Get this way to the pole.
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce you.
Yeah.
You're not here, so you're, you got it.
Okay. Anything else we need to talk about?
This thing is not here.
Okay. Uh, we'll adjourn the meeting at uh, three thirty one. See everybody here and.
Wow, a couple weeks.
Thanks, everyone.
Good job.
Thanks, Tara.